Folks, we will call to order the regular May meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. First time on our agenda is a roll call, please.
Yep, Chikovitz.
Present.
Love.
Present.
Wetherby.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Watson is absent. Taylor.
Present.
Gauss.
Present.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Next item is consideration of the minutes from our April meeting. Commissioners, you have a copy of those minutes. I presume you've had an opportunity to review them. Are there any additions or corrections to the April minutes? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for their approval.
Who approves was written?
Support.
We have a motion and support. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? April minutes are approved. Ah, the next item on our agenda is case twenty-four oh eight, which is a rezoning request, a planned unit development proposal relative to the most recent, I always say the old Bixby Hospital, but I should say the most recent old Bixby Hospital at eight-one-eight Riverside. As you may recall, the required pre-application meeting was held with the developer at our April meeting. And our intent was to hold a public hearing on that matter this evening. The meeting was noticed, but the staff tells me that we have not received the formal plan that was required for this meeting for that proposal. So we're unable to move forward with that at this time. But since it was noticed as a public meeting, is there anyone that wishes to address the planning commission on that particular matter? And if you'd come to the podium and tell us your name and your address and tell us what you'd like to say. Like I said, we, we aren't really in, since we don't have the plan before us, we're in a, we're in a position where we really can't discuss it in detail, so.
Okay. My name is Sylvia Stoner. I live at five-eleven South Scott Street here in Adrian. I am a thirty-year resident of Adrian and more importantly, a thirty-two-year-old, yeah, thirty-two-year resident of Bixby, let's see, M L, Bixby Medical, L H A, and ProMedica. So this is off the cuff, but we have some interest, the Bixby retirees of the bricks that are at the, the hospital. And I don't know if you've ever worked with ProMedica, but I've not gotten anywhere with them about getting the rest of these memorial bricks that we were, we purchased in the two thousands when there was fundraisers. And so I was wondering if Collier Gibson has already transferred, like, the ownership, like, who owns the property now?
That I would defer.
So it's owned still by ProMedica. It's big currently, a lease that the developers have. Only when the building's torn down will they own it.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you so much.
Yes. That voice from afar was our city administrator, Greg Elliott, who was at, at a conference this week. Anybody else on that particular topic? Since we don't have the detailed plans to consider that would have been the appropriate step in this process, I would ask for a motion to table this until we do have those.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support for tabling this. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will look forward to receiving that sometime in the not-too-distant future, I would imagine. Next item on our agenda, case twenty-four-ten, a rezoning request for four-forty East Church Street. Mr. Farver, I presume that's why you're here, or? Oh, okay. Since this is a request for a rezoning, I usually take a few minutes, just a few seconds to review what our process is for a rezoning request. You know, requests for rezoning are acted on by the City Planning Commission, but what we do is make a recommendation to the City Commission. Because it requires a change in the zoning ordinance, and they're the ones with the authority to do that. We need to consider a certain number of criteria when we consider a rezoning. For example, what identifiable conditions related to the application have changed that would justify the rezoning. This property is currently zoned as our old residential office, office service. And the request is to change it to E R O. We need to consider too, are there any precedents that would be created by either approving or denying this request? Is there an impact on the ability of the city or other government units to provide adequate public services and facilities? Does the requested change negatively affect any environmental conditions or the value of surrounding properties? Is the change consistent with the city's future land use plan? And what is the ability of the property in question to be put to a reasonable economic use in its, as it's currently zoned? And these are the criteria upon any, on which any recommendation needs to be based. So in order to consider evidence for or against the request, we conduct a public hearing. And we will review the presented evidence. We'll hear first from the petitioner. We'll review any written comments or documentation received from the public. We'll hear any comments from the public, either in favor or in opposition to the requested change. And we'll also consider recommendations and comments from the city's planning staff. With that said, if there's someone here to represent the petitioner, if you'd step forward to the podium and identify yourself, sir, and tell us what it is that you're asking for, and give us a little background.
Yes, my name is Craig Spiegel. I am the architect for this project. What we're hoping to do is rezone from R O to E R O. And I think everything in the the request, it kind of states it pretty well. I don't, I don't need to reiterate all of, a lot of it, but I think the the rezoning fits a lot better for the, for the use in that area than, than what it is zoned currently, because it's a school. And an E R O is, also includes education. So I think I don't, I don't think I need to, unless you want to.
Well, for, so we have it on the record. Why don't you tell us what the proposed use is in terms of?
Yes, it's for a re, or career development for the area, for various vocational uses, for educational, adult educational uses. And for just for the community and.
And this is, is this the L E D C or is it more specifically?
It's, it's the Align, Align Center for for workforce development, yes.
And is, do I understand correctly that that is part of the Lenaway Economic Development Corporation?
Is it? It's Lenaway now, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Again, your name's.
Matt Farver. I am the executive director of Lenaway now. The Align Center for Workforce Development was incubated by Lenaway Now Economic Development Corporation for the last seven years. We received a grant to build the center on the east side of Adrian. We purchased what was the old Lutheran School and most recently Restore World Church. It is going to be rehabbed and rebuilt as a workforce development center, which will be offering all types of different training needed for, whether it's skilled training, computer training, and it's also going to service a lot of the public needs as far as a community center as well. So it's a combination of both. We'll be collaborating with people like Michigan Works, both the colleges and a number ISD and a number of other people. So it's a, it's a center for workforce training and community development. So.
Miss, there's questions for either, either of the gentleman. Thank you, appreciate it. Jeremiah, did we receive any written or phone calls on this particular matter?
No.
Comments? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience, either online or in person, that would like to address the planning commission on this particular matter? If you please, and identify your, give us your name and your address and tell us what you'd like to say.
Sure. My name's Jill Bakewell. I live at fifteen-oh-one Canterbury Street in Adrian. We've been going through some stuff with the Adrian College Dome, and I know that there's no height regulations for E R O. I just want to say be careful what you do because there's no height regulations. Doesn't seem like in E R O, there's many regulations. We'll get to that later, but just be careful what you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Commissioners? Any discussion on this matter? The, the, you know, the prior, the lady who just spoke is, is makes valid point in that E R O is a very generous and wide-open zoning district with, with some intent. On the other hand, it does seem like the appropriate one for this particular use. And I know that relative to height regulations, it's something that we are working on addressing in the very near future. That said, any discussion on this particular application?
For relatively small parts, so I don't say that this should be a whole lot of additional development. The building is there. I don't know. I've looked at a tour. My guess is there's not a whole lot of treatment about.
First, our, our concern with any rezoning is that we know exactly what they're going to do with it. We don't know what the next owner may want to do with it. So, yeah. Yes, true. Other questions or comments? Add? Oh, nobody? Okay. With that, we could, I think we could review the criteria one more time, just to be certain. The conditions that have changed are that it had been used as a school and a church, and this is a different use, and it is consistent with the city's comprehensive land use plan. I don't believe it would create any precedence in terms of the use. The city, the utilities that would be used are probably not substantially different, or maybe even less than it was when it was used as a church or a school. We don't anticipate any environmental conditions, negative environmental conditions from this use. Property could be used. Would have economic use as it's currently zoned, but again, I don't see changing the zoning would change the, the economics of the property. So if the commission so chose, I believe that we could approve a recommendation to the city commission to change this property from R O Residential Office District to E R O. Entertain a motion to that.
Move to approve the resolution.
Support. A motion and support. Is there any additional discussion? Hey, if we could have a roll call, please, Jeremiah.
Johnson? Support. Wetherby?
Support.
Gauss? Taylor?
Support.
Chikovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Move past unanimously.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have your, you haven't, don't have it yet? That's a recommendation to the city commission. That concludes our formal agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission this evening? And if there is, if you'd come forward, identify yourself by name and address, and tell us what you'd like to say.
My name's Tim Bakewell. I live at fifteen-oh-one Canterbury. And this is just going to take a second. I'm sure you already know how I feel about the Adrian College Dome. So instead of expressing anger and frustration, I'd just like to offer a couple of comments. First of all, instead of doing the bare minimum as far as our notification was concerned, I noticed this meeting made the front page of the Telegram, and I know it's because of a zoning variance or something, but it just seems to me the common courtesy, knowing the impact that this would have on our neighborhood, just seems to me like it would have been a common courtesy to do something further than a little piece in the classifieds that had no details whatsoever. Secondly, planning commission, city commission, at this point, both have a little lesson, a stellar, stellar reputation in Adrian. You folks have got to work on transparency, so the citizens know what's going on and that they're being fairly represented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Jill Bakewell. I live at fifteen-oh-one Canterbury Street in Adrian. We have lived in our home for thirty-eight years and raised our children there. This home has been in my family for fifty-nine years. We are all taxpayers, I believe. You are all tax, or, and I believe you are all taxpayers to the city of Adrian with the exemption of the city administrator. We should have been given the opportunity to ask questions and express our concerns regarding the building of the Adrian College Dome prior to the passing of the project of this magnitude. It shouldn't matter how this project is zoned, E R O, commercial, industrial, et cetera. The culture of the secrecy needs to change. All we are asking is to get our questions answered. As you may or may not know, in my original email, I contacted the mayor, city administrator, all the city commissioners, Jeremiah Kleeman, Dr., President Docking for answers. I have also sent separate emails to Docking, the director of marketing and public relations at Adrian College, requesting meetings with the engineers, the consulting engineers, and anyone from Adrian College involved in the planning of the dome from the beginning. The only people who responded to my emails were Mr. Elliott and Commissioner Banky, who was in Europe at the time. Is there something this commission can do to help us get answers to our questions and concerns? We need to work together, not against each other. The culture of secrecy needs to change, and we are begging you for help. Some of our questions are, how will this dome affect our property? I E, water runoff, soil erosion, sewer and storm drains. Number two, the recourse we will have if and when our yards or basements flood. Currently, there are no height restrictions in E R, E R O zoning. How can we, how can you protect us from this ever happening again? How do we change the E R O zoning ordinances? Noise ordinance in E R O? How is this dome being inflated? And will we have to listen to constant humming and of compressors? Lighting, traffic, noise? What use agreements are in place? Regulations, regulations for the use of the dome? Will Adrian College be renting out the dome for tournaments like they do for Nicolay Field, which will increase traffic and street parking throughout the residential neighborhood? Signage? Where will the name of the dome be placed and how big will it be, among others? The city of Adrian and the residents need to work together to change the culture of the city government and the culture of Adrian College, being able to do something like this again. It is my hope that a huge lesson can be learned from this. Not only this will affect our property values, it will reflect, affect our quality of life. We will either have to move or endure the view of the dome for the rest of our lives. I speak for myself and the rest of the Canterbury, Renfrew, Shrewsbury neighborhood. We feel betrayed by the city of Adrian and Adrian College, but we are willing to work together for both to ensure that something like this never happens again. Thank you for your time. I would also like to ask, how do we get on, how do we get our questions answered? Who do we go to? Do we have to get on the agenda? What do we need to do?
Generally, I would suggest that you, if you haven't gotten them answered already, that you direct them to city, city administrator Elliott.
Okay, I, I sent an email yesterday to him, to Jeremiah Kleeman.
Okay.
And I believe somebody else, but I can't remember right now.
All your best bet, and he's at a conference right now, but he generally is very responsive.
Okay. And we would get on the agenda for the planning commission or? Can you help us get somebody from Adrian College to talk to us too? Like the engineers or the architects or whatever to answer some of these questions?
Relative to the dome, and I should say before we even start, if this were my neighborhood, I would feel the same way that you do.
I'm sure everybody would.
I am, I am sorry. I would feel the same way. However, in this particular case, the, the die is cast.
Right.
And, and.
And why is that?
You should know that this was a, this was a this was not a discretionary decision. This was a site plan review, unlike the things like we looked at tonight, or the, one of them, you know, that was a rezoning. In a site plan review, our responsibility, in fact, our only responsibility, and not just our responsibility, but our only tool, is we have to compare the proposal to a set of criteria, a, a set of, set of rules and regulations. And if it meets those, if the proposal meets those rules and regulations, then we are, have very little discretion as to whether we approve or don't approve. We have, if it meets the regulations, we are obligated to approve it. In this particular case, it did.
Could anybody have said regardless of in the E R O regulations or whatever it's called, that they don't need to notify the neighbors? Could anybody have said you need to notify the, either tell Adrian College they need to notify the neighbors or the planning commission needs to notify the neighbors and let us know what's going on, instead of we hear about it the week before the excavation started? You know? We were blindsided. We were absolutely blindsided.
I understand.
I hope this never happens again. That's why I spoke up about the, changing the zoning to E R O for this building over on Church Street. Because it could happen again, you know? Unless those, the zoning rules change.
We are, we're in the process of addressing that.
Well, I hope so, because this is a travesty. I mean, I can't imagine you guys having to live with this in your backyard.
I appreciate your comments sincerely.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Sue Walzhouse, one-seventy-five Canterbury, forty-one-year resident of Canterbury Street. It's going to be our five-year house. And we found a neighborhood with, that worked for our family. I appreciate very much your comments that you just made to us. Anytime constituents feel heard and seen goes a long way. Last night at the commission meeting, I was unable to attend, but I zoomed in and Commissioner Banky really, he made commissioner comments at the end that really supported our, what we discussed and the points. I'm here twofold. I've been asked to read someone's statement, Trudy McSorley, who lives on two-forty-four Renfrew Court. She was unable to be here tonight. But I also, before I say, read what she wrote, we're trying to be solution-oriented now. We're still angry. We, I, I know how we let it go. I walked around the neighborhood this afternoon before I came and spoke to a few neighbors and the hostility is just, it's there. And I talked with one woman who feels so she has such a faith-based way about her, and it just bothers her that she feels so much animosity towards a learning environment like Adrian College. And I said, we're, we're all there with you. You know, we want the best for a community, but not at the expense of our living. And so I'm going to read what Trudy. We have met in our neighborhood and we came up with one solution that we want to offer. We, it was offered last night. So pardon if I miss on some of these words because I, I didn't write this myself, but this is from Trudy. I'm here tonight over my concern with my fellow neighbors over the continuous encroachment of Adrian College in our neighborhoods without concern that results in change of aesthetics to the neighborhood environment. Continuous noise without concern of ours and the continuous multiplication of traffic in our neighborhood. Since both the baseball and softball fields access off of Stratford, traffic without regard to speed simply does not stop. Add that to the traffic to and from the maintenance garage, as well as the maintenance traffic to and from the two playing fields back to the college. It's not safe for children to play, families to enjoy their front and now backyards, as well as the lack of trust this neighborhood is lost with the tension of the increase of this traffic and use. Clearly, these residential roads were not constructed to take the increase of traffic. With the building of the dome, traffic will multiply beyond anything we could have ever anticipated. A very clear solution to this very serious problem would be to close Canterbury Street at Stratford. Aesthetically, this could be done with a small green space and barrier. For many of us in the neighborhood, this would be a bit of an inconvenience, but the good far outweighs the inconvenience. At least we would be able to take our neighborhood back to some agree, to degree. There is history to the solution. Not too many years ago, when Williams Street was closed at Mommy, so access to Adrian College had to be off Mommy at Charles or Madison. We realize that you're not going to give us answers tonight, but you, we feel that you do have a responsibility to address the concerns of these taxpaying citizens. I think that's, covers what I wanted to share. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And as I said, oh. Please.
Good evening, Commissioner, or Chairman, excuse me, Chikovitz and Commissioners. Just a, just a.
In, in your name, sir?
Tim Walzhouse, one-seventy-five Canterbury Street. Sorry about that. We had these, these made up. These are not photoshopped. Jill's brother is a Birmingham architect. Do they prove anything? No, it just helps give a visual of what we're going to look at. He, we took pictures into scale from the drawings that were provided from the site plan. These are what were put together. So just a, just a visual, not going to change anything. So regarding the, the college athletic dome currently underway, I understand, you know, this commission legally, you, you did what you had to do. And as Tim said, the anger, I'm, I'm over that. The lack of the building height restriction in the E R O zoning district, it, it didn't allow for any objections. It didn't allow for any delays. You, you had to approve it per the guidelines that were laid out for you. I understand that. Since the last meeting, I did do a FOIA. Asked for a dated FOIA, received a email with a link to it. And when you print out a twenty-four-page document on eight-and-a-half by eleven paper, even with cheaters and a magnifying glass, I did manage to, to work my way through it a little bit. Didn't understand much of it because it's, there's a lot of information there. But what I did find, just on page C zero dash three zero, just asking for a clarification, it states the following. Pursuant to the city of Adrian zoning ordinance latest issuance and amendment, parcel zoning, E R O, Educational Research Office District, Article eighteen, E R O, District Residential. Article twenty-four, section, schedule of regulations. Max lot coverage, zero-point-zero percent parentheses, non-listed. Max building height, fifty feet. Yard setbacks. Article twenty-four parentheses eleven, no building closer than seventy-five feet to residential. Article twenty-four parentheses thirteen. No building closer than fifty feet to residential. Article twenty-four parentheses twenty, building setbacks shall be increased one foot for each additional foot of building height over the max height of fifty feet. The site plan.
Okay, because I don't believe, I don't believe what you're quoting is what the city ordinance says.
I'm not, Chairman, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
Chairman, I'm, I'm not done yet. I'm close.
And I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt you, but.
No, you, you're fine. You're fine. Thank you.
The source was.
So twice within that site plan, it mentions a max height of fifty feet. So possibly the engineering firm, the architect, has made an error on the site plan. So if there is a clarification, great, I accept that. Um, just wanted to bring this to your attention and to Jeremiah's attention that if, if it's incorrect, it, it's incorrect. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? As I said earlier, uh, we are working on revision of the entire zoning ordinance and will be paying particular attention to the E R O district relative to the dimensional requirements. Uh, because we want to avoid something like this in the future. As, you know, I can't say as much as you do because I don't live on Renfrew Court, but, but in the same manner that you do, we want to avoid this in the future. Yes?
Will you check out what Tim just pointed out?
Yes. In fact, we're trying to do it now, but it's, this is hard to do on the computer at the moment, but. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Um, and again, whether there's practical or not, I have to say, I appreciate the, 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 uh, suggestion about Canterbury Street at, at Stratford, because I remember when they closed William Street and that made a difference there. And, uh, uh, we will ask city administration to, to take a look into that as well. Is there any other business to come before us this evening? If there is none, we would entertain a motion for adjournment. Support?
Support.
All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned.
In the site plan?
I don't have a site plan. I just have the code.
No, I didn't.